Call the meeting order, please. Call the roll.
Mr. Brooly.
Here.
Ms. Escalante?
Here.
Mr. Monk?
Here.
Mr. Rickman?
Here.
Mr. Voorhees?
Here.
Mrs. Walker?
Here.
A quorum has been established. Next on the agenda, the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda are citizens' comments. This is the portion of the meeting where you, the citizens, can address the board with any of your questions, comments, or concerns. We ask that you come to the microphone, state your name and address. We also ask that you be mindful of the chat three minutes by which to make your inquiries. And last, we ask, I ask that you address your comments to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens' comments.
Hi, my name is Wu.
Everybody is booming today.
My name is Julie Metuzik and I live at 84 Lordwick Street, Mount Clemens, Michigan. I'm here today as a citizen to express my opinion about the upcoming millage renewal. The school district is really important to our community and given the sacrifices made by teachers and staff and the administrators and you and the school board, we've made some great improvements. Improved safety, the budget is on its way to being balanced, the state is no longer talking about taking us over. We need to make some improvements, up our academics, some of our other skills around here, but it's, none of that will happen unless the millage renewal passes in November. It is, first of all, a renewal, so no one is going to see a tax increase. It is only applied to non-homestead property, so if your home is your primary residence, you're not going to see any difference at all. If you're a business owner or own a second home or rental property, you too will not see an increase. You'll still be paying the same 18 mils if this millage passes. This millage generates 27% of the day-to-day operations for the schools. There is no way for the school district to make up this money, in my opinion, given what you've already done with your budget. And why does that matter to people who don't send their children to the school? If this millage were to fail, the state will, in fact, take over this district. And we will be closed. That's what we know what happens with the other districts that have been taken over. If that happens, all of our home values will be hurt. We know from other school districts that when a school district is closed, the students are divided out into other districts, neighboring districts, but the homeowners in the district continue to pay the debt of the school district. So you get all of the burdens of a school district and none of the benefits. It is very important that people understand about this millage. I'm encouraging you all and the public to come to an informational meeting tomorrow, Thursday, October 18th, at the Mount Clemens Public Library at 6:30 PM, if anyone needs more information or has some questions about this. I think it's really important, in my opinion, that we keep the momentum going in this district, and we only do that if we pass this millage renewal in November, which people will find at the bottom of their ballot. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Patrick Cloninger, 38363, Cherry Lane, Harrison Township. I'm coming to you as a resident. I'm also coming to you as a senior producer of the McComb Cable Network, which is the cable table, cable access for the city of Mount Clemens and the Mount Clemens Community School District. I am asking the board's support and your help in opposing Senate Bill 637. If you have contacts in Lansing and Washington, please contact Senator Stabenow and Senator Peters and ask them to oppose this bill. It is a telecommunications right-of-way bill that is allowing cable companies free access to utility poles. It will also be a reduction, they will also be asking for a reduction in the public access and franchise fees they pay out to the communities in the state of Michigan. It is a total of over $100 million. The city of Mount Clemens stands to lose $180,000 in revenue that goes to general fund. Our friends in Clinton Township would lose $2 million. This is basically going unseen through Washington. It's been voted on and moved in committee through the FCC, and we are asking your support to please reach out to our representatives and senators in both the state and the federal levels to oppose this strenuously. The city commission has already signed a resolution to this effect. I would ask your support to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. The agenda is still open for citizens' comments. Citizens' comments. Last call, citizens' comments. Seeing or hearing none, moving the agenda. Next on the agenda, item five, consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, item A, approval of minutes for September 19th, 2018 regular meeting. Item B, approval of bills for payment. The chair would entertain a motion relative to the consent agenda. Mr. Brooly.
I'll move the minutes.
Moved by Mr. Brooly to approve the minutes of the September 19th, 2018 regular meeting. Is there a second?
This one.
Second, Ms. Escalante. Any questions, comments, concerns on the agenda item A, approval of the minutes for the September 19th, 2018 regular meeting? Hearing or seeing none? I'm sorry, Ms. Walker.
That's all right. On item two, my first, my first name is Christine, so if we could just change that where it says present, it's Christina and then Christine. Which, I like it.
So it's a correction?
Correction.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Any additional comments, questions, corrections, concerns? Seeing or hearing none? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Brooly?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Item B, approval of bills for payment. Mr. Brooly.
Yeah, I would move the approval of bills for payment.
Moved by Mr. Brooly.
Support.
Second, Mr. Voorhees. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Mr. Brooly.
Yeah, I would just like to come, we went through committee meeting and we looked through all the bills. We had a couple of citizen questions about the purchase of some tables, which we found totally to be in order, and we also had a question about the purchase of a maintenance item for the back of a truck, only one, which we also found to be in perfect order. And we encourage anyone that has a question about any bill to get it to one of us so that we can more clearly delve into it at the meeting, because we're willing to look at each and every item in its very specific nature and figure out what's going on. We found there were two questions from the public and we looked at and we found it was perfectly in accordance with our rules and policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooly. Any further questions, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Brooly?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item C, correction, item six, information, information item, policy 6325, procurement of federal funds, the background information policy number 6325 is revised to include updated language per federal guidelines. Ms. Davis or Mr. Monk, who wants to take care of that?
I'll just start, not going to let Ms. Davis finish. Yes, we looked at this policy at our last policy meeting and we reviewed this policy and this policy is based on, like it says, in the agenda of federal guidelines that will allow us to do what we need to do as far as what we're doing for the district. Ms. Davis.
And they said for the grants to, and it gives us a little bit more detail and information on how the federal government wants us to approve expenditures and grants, and they gave us certain guidelines, and it is mostly for micro purchases. We already have one out there for macro, so these will be the micro purchases, the smaller purchases that we do, and part of the audit process, they require us to also look at the smaller purchases, so that's what this update is all about.
Any other questions, discussion? It is recommended that it's presented for the first reading and it's federal guidelines and it's basically mandated that we do this, and so we really can't object to it. So any other questions, discussion?
Just if anybody have any questions, let us know and we can dive into whatever answers we need to get pertaining to this policy or any policies in the district.
And this is the first reading of the policy. There's no action needed at this time. It was just for information and like the chair of the policy committee, Mr. Monk stated, if you have any questions, to bring them to the policy committee so they can clear out any questions that may be, any questions or concerns around this policy. Item seven, the August cash flow report.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you can see from the report, as of September 28th and October 5th, we have $2.4 million in cash in the bank. Normally, we will be giving you also a financial statement for the month, but in the summer and until the board receives the audit report and it's presented and it's approved, we don't do the monthly financials until after that point. So you, at this time, you will get the, you get the cash flow and we will be ready to present to the board in a couple of weeks, and we're finalizing everything right now with audit. And so this is our report, and we have a few dollars in the bank to cover all of our expenditures.
Any questions of the superintendent regarding the August cash flow report? Mr. Brooly.
Yeah, I just want to report that we did look at this in the finance committee meeting and we went over in detail what was going on and we found all to be appropriate.
Thank you. Any additional questions, concerns?
When would the, when would the audit come to the board? Is it a November meeting or?
Yes, we're going to do some informational, and I believe it's next week. We're in contact with the auditors and they're going to try to get me the draft by Friday so we can look over it. They did want to give you something this week, but we hadn't had an opportunity to review it, and so I told them that we do have the finance committee review everything. I have to look at what they, how they have it laid out and make sure it's in the order that we, as a district, require it to be in, because sometimes we have a difference of opinion and want to make sure before we present anything to the board that it is ever, all of the expenditures where they need to be. So usually, we don't, but that's the reason why I want to make sure I go over it before we present anything to the board and make sure everything is decent and in order.
And they'll present that to us like our old audit, yo and yo, we'll have a, they'll come in, okay?
Yes, absolutely. We still have to go through that process.
Okay.
And get that presented, okay? And I think it still has to talk to the treasurer and to the board president, so they have not made those appointments yet, so we definitely don't want to bring anything to the board until they have the opportunity to speak with you guys if you have it in concerns or anything, so, okay?
Any additional questions on the agenda item seven? Seeing none? Item eight, open purchase order listings. Any questions on agenda item eight, open purchase or, open purchase order listings? I see none. Moving to item nine, contract listings. Any questions, comments, concerns on the agenda item nine, the contract listings?
And these are the reports that we give you guys monthly to, to make sure that you're up to date on where we are.
Mr. Brooly.
Yeah, under contracts, I just think it should be made aware and spoken in public that we have been exceptionally concerned about the rental agreement with the Kyren's Field, quote unquote. That contract had been led by the school district before most of us were on this board and that we have had a lawyer in litigation with the person who we've rented to and that we don't think that the property is being cared for in the appropriate way. And the city filed a complaint about that property. The person who is renting the property did not bring it up to what it should have been, and so that fell back on the school district. This shouldn't occur. Now, my information is the school district is, in fact, making efforts to correct the situation. I think that we need to apologize to the community people and say that we don't like what is going on at Kyren's Field. We don't think that the LEC is properly fulfilling their responsibilities and we are pursuing it in a legal fashion. So we're trying to keep it up, but also to change the situation. But nevertheless, the property has been in a bit of a disarray and we don't think that it should be, and so the school district is taking efforts to remedy that, but the residents in the community should not have to live with this, and we're sorry that we can't get the LEC to fulfill their responsibilities.
Thank you, Mr. Brooly. Any other questions, discussion regarding the contract listings? Seeing none? Item 10, superintendent's comments.
Okay, thank you. All right, this year has gone by so quickly, it's amazing that we're already, I think it's at the end of October, so I just want to share a few things with you. You do have a calendar in front of you of the activities that are so far, that have been scheduled for the year, and they're there by month, and we will continue to keep all of the months on there, even though August and September are past, we will still leave each month on there just so history-wise. So you do have that listing. There is a-
Question about that. I, I think I tried to mention this before, but in November, we do have November 6 listed as a general election day. Then we have, just below it, November 7, no school election. Is there, is there no school on the 6th or no school on the 7th?
It's, it's on the 6th. What happens when you add another line, it just automatically changes, so we'll fix that.
Well, I think we have to be very careful about those things when we publish them, so, and I did mention this before, not in this meeting, but in another one. So November 6, there's no school, and that is the professional development day?
Yes.
And November 7 is a regular school day?
Yes.
Okay. Just to make sure that everyone understands that.
Okay. Yep, and this is, our calendar is on the website. This is just something done specifically for you to have in your hand.
Right, but I, I don't know where this is going or bending, so that's why I want to make the comment publicly.
And, and thank you, because, right, I don't want you guys to be confused, but we just wanted to show, we have it color-coded and want to make sure at a glance you'll know what each of these items are for, so anything in red does pertain to, let's see what's the code, has some affiliation with the board. Blue means it's political. Yellow is academic. See, I gotta fix that. Green is curriculum, and if it's no shading, it's just a McComb, Mount Clemens calendar of events, so just different things happening throughout the district, so, but again, this, no one's going to see this but you, it's just in your handy. So we'll make sure the next time that when we add a line to highlight that, that you can see that, so, but thank you for pointing that out. Okay, so that's, there is a Halloween Spooktacular for October 27th, and it's at the Fountain Stage on McComb Place, and it is from, okay, the downtown trick-or-treating is from noon until 3:00. Mount Clemens Trunk-a-Treat is from noon until 3:00. Kid-friendly haunted hallway, that's also noon until 3:00. And then you have Meet and Greet Hazel the Wacky Witch, and that's from 2:00 to 3:00. Roscoe the Clown Show will be at 1:00. Halloween Putt-Put Golf Spooky, the 20-foot-tall black cat will be there, and lots of free trick-or-treat bags. So I just want to bring attention to the community that that is happening. Also, we have the Take Back, the National Prescription Take Back Day, and that's going to be held Saturday, April 28th, and that is from 10 until 2. Yep, April.
April's already passed, 2018.
It should be 2019, because we, yeah, it's supposed to be 2019. So we'll have to make sure that-
I thought I was only going to mess up like that. He said cut. We don't cut.
Okay.
Live TV, cut it.
All right. Let's see.
Wrong information.
Okay. And then we have Help Us Light Up Mount Clemens for the Holidays, and it is asking people to sponsor a Christmas tree in the city's first ever tinsel tour. And this, the trees will be decorated and highlighted from December 1st through January 1st, and there is contact information concerning that. A sponsor for a tree is $75, and if you need more information on that, we will have that. Also, let's see. You have a Bather Blast newsletter for the secondary, and we have Students of the Month, which is Mia Halestis, I hope I didn't butcher your name too much, Jeremiah Mitchell, Javion Gamble, Javon Hannah, Christian Laura Hinders Hernandez, sorry about that, Don Williams, and Jacob Williams, and we want to congratulate those folks for being Student of the Month. We have a Family vs. Family Math Bingo Night, and that is going to be on October 23rd. It's a Title I night, and it starts here in the media center at 6 o'clock. Okay. We also have a Teacher of the Month, and that is Ms. Will, Ms. Lewis. She's our Academic Support Staff Member of, let's see, I'm sorry, Ms. Lewis is the Teacher of the Month, and then Ms. Natalie is the Academic Support Staff Member of the Month. So congratulations to those folks. They did get a token of appreciation, so congratulations to them. You'll also, see, you have a Clementine in front of you. It's the one from October through December, and also it's a centennial publication that you have, so we want to make sure that we share those with you. Let's see. And we have a family, can't remember the last name, little Boston, Powell, yeah, just want to send out our condolences to the family. They've lost their little baby last week and the funeral was yesterday, and it was, if you can help the family with asking, you know, just reach out to them and comfort them and let them know that we are here for them. It's a wonderful family. The mom is a beautiful mom. She really takes care of her kids. They are very well behaved, and it was just heart-wrenching for the, not only her family, but the entire Mount Clemens community, the district family. So our condolences go out to them. And we are going to have a Santa Parade, Saturday, November 17th, at 10 o'clock, and one of our own students, Erica Peoples, she's going to be the Grand Marshal, and she is one of our alumni who constantly gives back, and her family still lives here and she comes back to support as much as she can, so with her busy schedule, because she is an actress, a poet, a DJ, and producer, so she's a very busy young lady. So we're thankful that she still takes the time to come out and support Mount Clemens, so she will be the Grand Marshal on that day. Halloween is on the 31st. We want to make sure that our students not only have a great time, but be safe. There are lots of things going on that is happening here in the community, and we're hoping that our students will get out and enjoy those times and have a great fun, but be careful. And of course, November 6, we're asking everyone to go out and vote. It's a very important day for everyone. We're not telling you how to vote, but we are asking you that you do go out and vote, because this is our city, it is our county, and our state, as well as country, so we need to make sure we do our part to be active in the political process. So please, go out and vote on November 6. And with that, one other thing, I did present today in Lansing to Treasury that this was their third annual finance, it's called Finance Resources Conference, and this is the third year that they've done it. This year, they asked me to come in and be part of their think-tank task force, and the topic that they gave me was, is a boarding school option needed in your district? And it was, we, it was a really good dialogue that we had. It's about 10 people in the room that, because they're different breakout sessions, and I was surprised that districts and the folks, even one charter school, are very much interested in doing something different. Education is not the way it was when we were coming up. There are lots more pressures and responsibilities and different things that's put on teachers, on school districts, and we're not getting the results that we want because right now, I personally believe that our kids have so much access to so many things that we didn't growing up. They have every electronic device. We spoil them because we want our kids to have better things, and they don't see school as a big deal, and so it's, we're having to teach children in a different way. Not that they can't learn, but it's not exciting to them, and the people in the room said that they were having the same issues in their community, so it didn't make any difference whether they were on the high end, getting huge perpugal foundation, or they were on the low end of the foundation, and it didn't make any difference whether they were in large cities, in the suburbs, or in the rural. They all had the same issues that now every school district across America, because at one point, we were in the top 10 in Michigan, in the country, and now we are ranked number 49. And so we need to do something differently, and even at that, across America, we are not the, we don't, we're not the educational powerhouse that we once were, and our foreign students are really outshining us in so many different ways. And I do get it, we educate everyone, and in foreign countries, they educate only a select few, so only their highest achieving students rise to the top because they are the ones that's going to school, but we want to educate everyone, so we have to do things differently. So the conversation was- So the conversation was, how can we get this moving? And Detroit said that they've been asking for something like this for the past fifteen years. So it's good to know that there are other people that's entertaining. So I don't know where it's gonna go, but it was a great conversation, and I was glad to be a part of that, representing Mount Clemens. And with that, close your mic up.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Agenda item eleven, Committee Reports, beginning with the Business Committee. Ms. Walker.
I'm going to ask Mr. Bruley or to report on it, or Christina, since I was not there. I was unable to make it, so either one of you.
Okay, yeah, it's okay. I'm glad that you're feeling better by the way. Yeah, Ed and I met with Teresa on the ninth of October at nine-thirty in the morning. And we went over the bills, the POs, as mentioned before. We found everything to be in working order. We also talked about getting a monthly briefing on facility needs based on buildings. And we also spoke briefly on the Karn Center, which Mr. Bruley also spoke about. And that was pretty much our meeting. It was productive, and we were out of there pretty quick.
Any question of the committee? Thank you, Ms. Escalante. Policy, Mr. Monk.
Thank you, sir. We met on October tenth at ten o'clock. All was present. We, first item we talked about was, and this information is in the board packet. First item we're talking about was the policy that we brought for first reading tonight, Policy sixty-three twenty-five. We'll bring that to the second board meeting in November. Not second board meeting, but second reading in November. Item three, we talked about a superintendent evaluation. I don't know if everybody is aware that the final superintendent evaluation is in November. November is a jam-packed month, not only with the holiday in there. I know that I will be leaving out of town after the board meeting. So, you know, we have a lot of other things that are heard tonight that we need to do in November. So November is gonna be a jam-packed month, and per our policy, also per state requirements and guidelines, that evaluation has to happen in November.
I thought it was December.
November.
Okay.
And annual, just to get a little bit of background on it, we went over this at our policy. Meaning, the annual evaluation, superintendent performs self-evaluation, presents the portfolio with evidence to the Board of Education. The board members review portfolio prior to evaluation, seek clarification as needed. Board President or consultant facilitate evaluation. Formal evaluation is presented to and adopted by Board of Education. And then last, the Board President and Superintendent coordinate public statement regarding superintendent's performance. We kinda, you know, get, we came up with some dates. These are not dates set. We were not saying that these are the dates to mention. We said we'll bring this to the full board. And we came up with a preliminary date of February the second for the superintendent to provide her self-evaluation.
November, November.
I'm sorry, November, yeah, I'm sorry, November second. Board to review self-evaluation the week of the fifth. Schedule evaluation with the board tentatively November fourteenth. Evaluation report out at November board meeting. Location of evaluation, you know, we suggest us having it right here on site. And then we, she was going to, superintendent's going to confirm whether the wa, the evaluation need a hundred, because it's a consensus evaluation. So is it a hundred percent? Is it the majority, or the supermajority that needs to be? I would suggest that we all be here, because this is a first evaluation, first evaluation that we are involved in going forward. That's why I said November is a jam-packed month, and this date, this month will be on top of us real quick. So we did, so that's up for board discussion pertaining to superintendent evaluations that we need to do. We can't put it off. We need to do it in November. Attendance update, I heard a little sidebar. I don't know, are we having, that's something that we're gonna schedule the, at a workshop? Okay, so I'm gonna talk about that. But we did talk about that percentage, you know, we wanna look at the percentages. Nobody, no mean, we wanna look at names and all that. We don't need names and all that, just percentages. And we wanna see if this new policy is working. You know, we wanna see the progress of the new policy. And from what the superintendent told us at our meeting, it sounded like it's working. So, item five, we also brought up the two thousand nineteen-twenty uniform discussion. I've done my homework, I've looked at a lot of data, and I presented to the committee a rough draft of what a policy, a uniform policy should look like. We are going to reach out to Neola to see if they have any blueprints as far as uniform policy. So we wanna really get this uniform going, so hopefully we can have this, and it's a consensus of the committee, we can have this presented for first reading, adopted for second reading by the end of this year. I think the earlier we get this information out to our families, to our neighborhoods, to our community, the better off. You know, we talked about, you know, we said, well, if DPS, Detroit Public School System, as large as they are, can go to a uniform policy like that, I think we can too. You know, we also mentioned that, you know, we at Mount Clemens, we are, we are in a rebranding phase. And I think this, we feel, the committee feels that this goes along with us rebranding and going forward and being a new and improved community school district. So we talked about that. What else we talking about? Field trip guidelines revised. I know Mr. Bruley was asking about that, and I think y'all had discussed that. Christina brought that information back to us, so we looked at that. The ratio, background checks, all the above as far as field trips. Other matters for consideration. We talked about the hiring process as far as the district, and that falls up under the superintendent. We talked about interview committees. You know, we suggested to the superintendent that those committees should consist of, you know, a professional that's in that field, administrator, and how she see fits. She conducts that, that's up under her tutelage, that's up under her umbrella. But we just made suggestions to her as far as who needs to be on those committees as far as going forward and hiring her employees. We talked about the Hall of Fame nominations are upcoming. I know I had one that I'm gonna do. Her name is Shayna Deans. She holds the record for Mount Clemens girls' basketball, scoring forty-eight points in one game. And that, I don't think that's gonna be broken for a while. So I know that, and then I think Christina was talking, or Glenn, what you talking? Somebody else was talking about, wasn't it?
Has there been a committee established to go over that outside of the board itself? Because I know it's been talked about, but that's all that was talked about. There's been no, you know, committee established to do that, because in the past, when they've had the nominees to the Hall of Fame, there was a committee that was put together, and the committee controlled that was not controlled by the board.
Right, no, that's something that superintendent brought to us, far as any, do we wanna nominate anybody? So that's something that's-
And it is, I think it is a committee that's already in place, but they would like one board representative on that committee. So they've been here a few times, and I believe, yeah, even Tom Hanna is one of the people on that committee. And, but they did request that a board member join that team.
And I have no, no problem with that, but I just, I know it's known in passes. And there's been some folks who have some institutional memory and knowledge, you know, from the district, like Gary Seer, and folks of that caliber who have all, you know, have played a part in that, in that whole process, so. That's all that's questioned.
Yeah, she, like I said, superintendent just asked us, do, do we know of any people to be nominated? So I mean, being an ex-coach of the district, I know that I coached Shayna Deans myself, who was also an All-State player. So that's, that's what I brought up her name. Top ten, we talked about the top twenty high school lunching, lunch with the board, which is gonna happen this, the last Friday of this month. And we're gonna meet with students at the high school. I think we decided on pizza, I think we're gonna do for the first one going forward. And we suggested that, you know, Mr. Gibson, you know, get all the, you know, get the students together. Everybody had name tags on. Me personally, I remember a face, but I cannot remember a name, it saved my life. So name tag would be great, and we'll give you an update on how that goes. We're looking forward to it. I think it's gonna be a good start for just being, you know, interaction with the students in the district. You know, kind of pick their brain, what they wanted to do, you know, where they wanna go, stuff like that, so. We talked about that. And then we talked about the tentative board workshop, and we adjourned at eleven-thirty-four. It's a very impactful meeting, and that is my report. Now entertain any questions.
Any questions of the chair? Thank you, Mr. Monk. Curriculum personnel.
Yes, and we had a couple people there, Mr. Bruley and Christina Escalante. And basically, we went over some of the things that Mr. Monk spoke about as far as the hiring process and who should be on the committee. And so it was basically the same thing that Mr. Monk spoke about. And Mr., oh, did you wanna say something, Mr. Bruley?
Well, we had a concrete proposal that we would like to have a workshop to occur next Wednesday. Time to be figured out, decided here. The agenda would be to do the calendar, which would include all of the things that Mr. Monk talked about, to get a preview of the audit. And we have an academic proposal that we would like to put before the other members of the board that evening also. So that would be the three things that we would talk about at that time, that we then schedule a workshop one week ahead of the board meeting next month that would focus strictly on attendance. So I would like, if it's appropriate, to move that.
What exactly is your movement, so we make it clear?
I would move that we have a workshop of the board next Wednesday. The agenda be a preview of the audit, a, to set the calendar for the year for our board meetings, to listen to an academic initiative, and that the week before the next month's board meeting, we have a workshop that deals with attendance.
It's been moved by Mr. Bruley to establish October twenty-fourth as a board workshop. Six-thirty?
Six-thirty, it's fine for me, it's fine for everybody else.
Six-thirty, in this room. Is there a second?
Support.
Second by Mr. Monk. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor?
It would include those three items.
Yeah. Seeing or hearing none? Call row, please.
Mr. Bruley?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, and the second part?
I'll need your help with the calendar. The second part would be to have a workshop that would be focused on attendance one week prior to the November board meeting.
November board meeting is the twenty-first, if my calendar is correct. And that would be the fourteenth. And I think I heard Mr. Monk wanting to, in his report, saying something about, the committee talked about having the fourteenth as a superintendent's evaluation day.
Yep. Tentatively, yeah, tentatively, the fourteenth. You know, just remember, you know, just want everybody, you know, so we're all clear. It's a process, so she has to do her self-evaluation. We have to review it, have any questions, get those back to the president. You need to get those questions answered, and then we meet again. I mean, so it's impactful, so, I mean, along with everything that Ms. Bruley just said, so.
Question, what was the November sixth date that you mentioned? What, what do we have to do then?
November sixth.
That's election.
Right, yeah, that's election day.
Right, that's why-
November second, second.
Oh, oh, no, I'm sorry. November second, superintendent provides her self-evaluation to-
The second.
To, to, yeah.
And your next date, then, after that?
The next date would be the week of November the fifth. We have that week to review her self-evaluation.
So it isn't a meeting, it's just-
Right, us reviewing, then we get what a question we have back to the president.
Right. And then the fourteenth was?
Tentatively, evaluation day.
All right, so the board would meet then, is what you're saying?
Because we have to meet, and that's where the consensus evaluation needs to happen.
And that has, and that is a meeting, not a workshop.
Okay. Is it possible to do both in the same evening?
That'd be difficult for me, because just my work schedule, you know. I know if we're gonna talk about that, that's gonna lead into, that'll be a long meeting. And I know I have to be done by eight o'clock to get to work, so.
Okay.
Maybe I can do, I mean, if we can do it earlier, whatever, but later in the night is bad for me.
So maybe we do the evaluation and then the attendance. Do you wanna leave that on there?
What, what is the earliest people could come on the fourteenth?
I would suggest even do it before the fourteenth. I mean, that's just that, you know, the week, actually, the week, I was looking at the calendar, the week of the fifth is kind of wide open. So I don't know if we wanna move that up in the week of the fifth to do the attendance? Then we can do the evaluation on the fourteenth? It's up to the board. I'm just kind of throwing suggestions out there.
I'm, I'm happy to do the evaluation on the fourteenth. Maybe the Tuesday night before, we can do attendance?
I'm seeing some affirmative, and I'm seeing some blank looks.
Thirteenth, right? That's, yeah.
Thirteenth would be attendance.
That'd be thirteenth would propose to be the workshop. And it's a fourteenth, a special meeting.
What's the earliest we can meet on the thirteenth? Can anybody meet during the daytime, I know Mr. Monk?
I can. I gotta work at six AM, so.
Whatever's good.
Oh, yeah, I know for you. I'm tired every day, so I'm retired every day.
What's good for you?
Well, I can make my schedule earlier on Tuesday, bother that during the week, everybody know, pushing it to six-thirty. But, you know, it's gonna be what it is. I mean, it's majority board.
Six-thirty on, on the Tuesday, and then six-thirty on the Wednesday? If that's consensus, I'll make the motion for having the workshop on Tuesday at six-thirty, the meeting on Wednesday at six-thirty. Is that dated, okay?
Well, on Tuesday, we can go even earlier than six-thirty. We can do five o'clock, five-thirty, that's why I'm saying if we can get a little earlier. Is that good for you, Mr. Bruley?
I can, I can make five-thirty.
How about we do five-thirty?
Five or five-thirty.
Yeah.
Mr. Bruley?
And then to the superintendent, with the attendance, I would think it might be beneficial to have some of the principals involved, and we could schedule it so that they maybe don't have to come and go, but make it as convenient as possible for them.
Okay.
But I think that that might be helpful, to listen to their impact on this area and seeing what's good, bad, or suggestions and things like that.
Okay.
If that's in accordance with you.
Okay, all righty.
Okay, I'm trying to work, I think I heard, or Mr. Bruley proposed that we have the workshop on Tuesday, November the thirteenth, at five-thirty.
Or, Mr. President, can you get it here earlier? Because it would help, I think, people at the school to not be late.
I possibly could get it at five. I can jump in some balls and jump in some thing in there. I possibly could get it at five. I can juggle some balls and juggle something in there and do it at five.
I think that'd be helpful for the principals and things.
Can you put it in formal motion, sir?
I would do that.
Okay.
I would move that we meet at five o'clock to do the workshop on the thirteenth.
Here?
Here.
Moved by Mr. Brewley to hold a workshop. Committee to hold workshop for the board on Tuesday, the thirteenth, at five o'clock in this room.
Deal with attendance.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Voorhees. Any questions, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none? Call row, please.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. And for the fourteenth, can we get a motion?
I'll move that we hold, this will be a special meeting, correct?
Yes, sir.
I'll move that we hold a special Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, November the fourteenth, at six thirty in this room regarding the superintendent evaluation.
It's moved by Mr. Voorhees to hold a special board meeting, November the fourteenth, six thirty PM, in this room for the purpose of superintendent evaluation.
Second.
Second by Mr. Monk. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none? Call row, please.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns, or other curriculum personnel, please? Mr. Littenberry, Community Coalition.
Thank you, sir. Superintendent did just my report for me, so I appreciate that, with all the paperwork you got in front of you. Next Friday, the twenty-sixth, we do have our Career Preparation Day. It will be held during fourth and fifth, fourth, fifth, and sixth hours for the juniors and the seniors. They're gonna have the opportunity to pick between three or four workshops to attend. There will be, the one workshop will be the Interviewing for Success. Another one will be the Art of Networking, Career Exploration, and Apprenticeships One-O-One. These will all be led by staff from MSU Extension who have a career or extensive expertise in these different fields. They'll be leading one-hour workshops. The kids will be able to pick from the three of those and attend those on that day. There will be some select sophomores who will be able to attend, depending on what their schedule is for that particular day. I do apologize, this was the spring flyer. I was meant to propose to print off the fall flyer, I apologize. It is October the twenty-seventh, everything else is correct. It will be from ten to two at the Wilson Gym. It is our bi-annual Drug Takeback Day. Again, I apologize for the misprint on that. We do also, of course, have our Halloween Spectacular, which, of course, the superintendent already touched on. I don't want to bring that to your attention. I have more of these flyers in the back. If you want to hang them and give them to family and friends who have little ones, take them to your favorite churches and distribute them. I did want to talk about this tinsel town, if I know the superintendent touched on it. This is going to be really cute. It's gonna be from December first until January first. They're gonna be putting Christmas trees along the riverfront, and it'll be going up for the entire month. You can sponsor a tree for seventy-five dollars. You get the tree, two hundred white lights, and signs for your organization to display who made the tree. And then DPS will go ahead and take them away in January and dispose them for you. So for only seventy-five dollars, you guys can decorate a tree, put it down there, and they'll be all on the riverwalk for the entire month of December. So it should be quite spectacular, and a really fun thing for the kids to go on a family night, visit a nice night out, take a walk down the boardwalk, and look at lit up Christmas trees. Isn't that beautiful?
Yes.
So this is the last event for the bicentennial.
Great family thing, yeah.
So seventy-five dollars for any organization, group, church, whatever, you can sponsor your own tree. Again, you get a tree, lights, and a sign for your organization to put in front of your tree. Yes.
So can we as a board adopt a tree?
Absolutely. I encourage you to, you have many. So for, I guess, I get the great price. So contact the city manager's office, four six nine six eight one eight, extension three one five, and call for your tree, and those will be available. The application's on here as well. So everything, I think it's gonna be a really, really fun thing for the holiday, for, you know, something. And I hope it becomes a regular thing. It sounds like a lot of fun. And then again, as the superintendent already touched on, what's near and dear to my heart, the Santa Claus Parade. Our own Eric Peoples will be our grand marshal. She just said yes the other day, so these are fresh off the printer today. Again, I have several in the back, if you want to pass some out, hang them in your church, other schools, what have you. We have wonderful events for the kids at Mount Clemens. We need to make, get the word out, make sure they all know that we are doing these things for them, so they can have a wonderful, wonderful holiday. And that's all I have. Once again, I ask you your support in opposing Senate Bill six three seven. Any questions I may answer? Have a lovely...
Thank you, Mr. Littenberry. Legislative Committee, there was a meeting. It was just a regular business meeting. And what this meeting that was held a couple of weeks ago, it was a campaign, Meet the Candidate Forum. There were two Republican candidates, two Democratic candidates running for the State Board of Education. Three females, one male. The male's an incumbent, Republican incumbent. And a female Republican and two female Democrats were at the Meet the Forum candidate. And there were questions fielded from the audience that were responded to by the candidates. Tim Scubic, you know, if you've heard his name on the news, he was, started out as being the moderator, and then he got a call. His wife was in a car accident, and he had to abruptly leave the session. And Mike Devault was thrust into the position of being the moderator for the remainder of the Meet the Candidate Forum. And as in any political Meet the Candidate Forums, you know, people gave their philosophical opinions and ideas and responses to questions. Some of the responses were germanely political, danced around the question, really didn't answer the questions. That was my impression of it, but I'm not gonna be political telling you who to vote for, how to vote, just November the sixth, cast your vote. And that's my report. Any questions? I will politically dance around them. Mr. Monk, excuse me, Mr. Mr. Dr. McFadden?
Sir.
Athletic Ad-Hoc Committee.
Once again, you know, ad hoc committee is when there's something urgent to come up, we have a meeting. We didn't have one this month because I want to give it to the superintendent, and we gotta talk about curriculum and personnel thing, so it's gonna fall, it falls together. So this upcoming meeting's gonna be good. I was out of town for my personal meeting, so we have something coming up soon.
Thank you. Educational Foundation, still no, no meeting scheduled from the Educational Foundation. Next on the item, agenda item, Board Comments. We'll start with Ms. Escalante.
Well, fall is here, and I'm most excited about fall back, because that's happening on November fourth, where we get to turn our clocks back an hour. And I don't know why we can't just keep it that way once we switch them. Because spring forward is horrible. It is. Your kids are tired, like, I don't know. Anyways, I'm a fall girl. I love fall. It's my favorite season in Michigan. Oh, I wanted to say that I appreciate all of my colleagues. I know a lot of you guys have been doing things behind the scenes. Most of the time, the public doesn't hear about that. They hear about everything we're supposedly not doing, but we do a lot. We give a lot of our own time back to the community. And I just want to say that I appreciate and feel blessed to work with everybody that's sitting up here. I think we all bring a lot of good things to the table, and it's, it's, it's good. I want to give a shout out to Mr. Rickman for helping me pop popcorn on Friday last week at Seminole. It was extra good.
Did he eat it all?
He did, yes.
Okay.
It took us, it took us a long, it took you longer than I could understand. Yeah, I mean, every time I would pop, we would be short bags, and now I know why. But he did pay for it, so it's okay. You asked me to go first, I'm sorry. That's what you get. You gotta switch it up next month.
I go last, you remember that.
Trouble now, right? I think that's all I really have. I, I hope everybody, all, I, I hope everybody's children are adjusting. Actually, I'm looking out at Mary, and I remember her telling me when Max was in kindergarten, by about October, the kids finally start to adjust a little bit. They get up a little bit easier, and it's actually kind of true. And then, like I said, once fall back hits, they're like up way too early. I'm like, no, we still have another hour. Go back to bed. We're not doing breakfast yet. But it's, I think that there's good things coming, things that we discuss in our meetings. There's a lot of good things coming for the district. Continue to support us, support the kids, because that's really what it's all about at the end of the day, is our children. So with that being said, once a bather, always a bather.
Thank you, Ms. Escalante. Mr. Voorhees?
I really don't have an awful lot to say. However, I do stand corrected from the last meeting. I understand fully that we only hire the superintendent, and she, in turn, hires and vets all other employees. So I stand corrected, and it's imperative that, that we get out and vote. God, I have voted in every election, and I'm not patting myself on the back. I'm sixty-seven years old, and I started voting when, I think, when we're maybe, well, twenty-one anyway. And I find it to be a very important thing, because that gives me the opportunity to voice my opinion, because I at least went out and voted. So please vote on November the sixth. It's very important, all the way along, from the national level all the way down to our local level. So with that, once a bather, always a bather.
Thank you, Mr. Voorhees. Mr. Monk?
Thanks, sir. I would first like to take this opportunity to thank the teachers, the parent pros, the aides, the psychologists, the social workers of our district. All these folks work very hard on a daily basis, and they meet our students where the rubber hits the roads inside of our classrooms. Teaching, helping, counseling, and providing for all of our students. So I would like to say thank you for what you have done, for what you are doing, and for what you are going to do in the future for our students and parents. Students, let's get off to a great start. Get settled in inside the classrooms. Make sure you perform at your highest level and highest ability to achieve the goals that you have set forth for yourself. And it's like Nike says, just do it. I would like to say and send my condolences to the family and congregation of one of our own past board members, pastor, teacher of the gospel, and friend, Brother Thompson of North Broadway Church of Christ, who recently passed. While thinking about my friend we first met during my days of selling barbecue at the Mount Clemens Farm City Festival many years ago. We remained friends throughout the years, and I recently found a picture that I took with Brother Thompson together when I decided to run for this board four years ago. And he invited me to his church to speak to the community, and they welcomed me with open arms. We have lost one of our great icons in this community, and he will be greatly missed. As we're approaching another election year, I urge all who can, please get out and vote this November the sixth. We have a lot of issues. There's a lot of issues dealing with the local, the school district, our state, our federal government. Most importantly, do your homework. And like my colleague says, this gives you the opportunity to voice your opinion on wherever you fall on the scale. Republic, Democrat, independent, wherever you fall, but definitely get out and vote. One of my fellow board members will be hanging his hat and moving on to enjoying his lovely wife and his awesome daughters in his retirement. Glenn, you will be sorely missed as we both came onto this board four years ago. I have truly learned a great deal from your leadership and calm spirit. Thank you for all you have done for this district, and to my brother from another mother. Once a bather, always a bather. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monk.
Mr. Brewley?
Tuesday the sixth is a very important day, and I would like to give one of our other board members, as Chair of Policy Committee, a little bit more work. Just what we need. You're right. I would like to see us establish a policy on voter registration for students. I would like to see us have an official process where we mandate the administration to register students as soon as they become eligible. They may vote how they wish. But that, then that voting gets considered for extra credit or community service hours. I think it is a service to your community to add your voice, whatever your positions are. And I think that we need to formally recognize those students who do do that. We do have students who become eighteen. There is a process by which students can register ahead of time so that, that when the election comes, they're already registered. And I think we, as a board, need to encourage that and then recognize them in some formal way. So I would appreciate it if your committee would take that up and figure out what is the most appropriate way to do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brewley. Ms. Walker?
Well, again, November sixth is a big day. Vote. Get out and vote. If nothing's better than leaving my house first thing in the morning, and all my neighbors are walking to the pole at the same time. I'm like, some of these people I don't see very often. I'm like, well, good morning. So there, and there's a lot of good things happening in the city, in our school. This is a great place to live and a great place to go to school. And I am with you with the fall back. However, Mary, October does not make it any easier. This morning, I got in the car, and I said to Anna and Caleb, the car is pulling out. Get in it, or it's leaving. I'm like, I have to move. So prodding teenagers, I... So those are my comments, and hoping for a little bit of a better morning tomorrow.
Dr. McFadden?
Well, once again, another year, our sports teams are winding down for the fall events. Volleyball did a strong fought battle last night. I think they have a tournament this weekend, coming on Saturday. Your lady bathers are out there, and they're putting up a good fight, and very entertaining, very entertaining. So if you ever get a chance to go see them, please do. Once again, another year, and we trucking right along. We making progress, and we doing the best we can. We got a great team all around this table, the staff, the media, everybody, working well. With that being said, we got a lot of changes coming on the horizon. We're gonna be losing Glenn, we're gonna be missed, and it's by your choice, but, you know, we'd like for you to stay along, but I understand. Things, things have to change, have to evolve. Mr. Monk, Mr. Brewley, Christina, Ms. Walker, Mr. Comm... Great team, and I think one of the best teams put together. I do say I believe we're the dream team. Don't see eye to eye all the time, but that's what makes a good family, a good family. With that being said, November sixth is time to vote. Put your name in the hat, and time to pull it out. So get out and vote. Just get out there and do your due diligence. I'm gonna say thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Dr. McFadden. It's October, middle of October, and I've had the opportunity to walk through all of, all of our buildings, King, Seminole, and High School. I usually come in around lunchtime, because that's when you really see the students, when they're... How does it, they really energize during the lunch, during the lunch hour, because they can let off, they can vent, because they're not, have to pay attention, they don't have to listen to anybody, and they don't. Because when you go into the cafeteria, you hear all of this noise. And I'm saying, if you're eating, you can't be talking. And it's just, the volume is, you know, is up in the lunchroom, because all these kids, you know, these students are getting all this energy out that they can't get out in the, in the, in the times in there in the regularly structured, structured classroom. And this is really true at Seminole. Yes, I went over, and Christina says she's generally finished with the popcorn popping and bagging by eleven o'clock. And I, I was busy at work, and I jumped, tied, got, got away about ten thirty, and I'm coming over there apologizing for being so late. They were just getting started. And if had I not been there, they still would have been scooping popcorn. She claiming I was eating the popcorn. She claiming I was eating the popcorn, that's the farthest from the truth. I, I ate the popcorn after. And after all five-hundred-and-ninety-seven bags with stuff, and I must've stuffed four-hundred of the bags. Because every time my, my box got empty, Christina's mother-in-law was coming over with a new box. The other lady that was volunteering across from me, she just sitting there, her box is empty. She's just sitting there, so I take half of my box and pour it over to hers, so she would be doing some work too. Christina's mother-in-law, uh, with another box there, but here come Christine with another, here's another twenty-five bags you need. And then here's another twenty-three bags you need. So I think I was the starter at that. I had very little time to indulge in enjoying the popcorn while it was hot and fresh, because I had a task to do. And scoop it and put it in the bag. And then when the machine couldn't keep up with my production. The machine couldn't keep up with my production. I went into the cafeteria, and it was kindergarten lunchtime in the cafeteria. And I mean, I didn't realize little people could make that much noise while eating. And it was just like, I was just fiber gassed at that time. You're not gonna eat? No, we're talking. What you supposed to be eating? We'll eat later. It's lunchtime now. And then he get up, "What's your name?" Every table I went to, everybody, "What's your name?" So I had to fist bump everybody at the table and tell everybody who, you know, who I am. And, "What's your name?" And I, I, "Okay, good to meet you, good to meet you." And then they said, "What was your name again?" I said, "Okay, won't worry about it, we'll, we'll get it down." So I fist bumped everybody, and then I run back into the popcorn kitchen room and do my popcorn scooping, bagging responsibility too. The machine couldn't keep up with me again. Then I wandered back to another group of kindergarteners having lunch. And there was one little kindergartner, I went up to her table and said, "Ask her, what's wrong? You have a sad face." He said, "Can you move me?" I said, "Why do you need to be moved? This boy next to me keeps trying to kiss me." Or he wants to kiss me. And Ms. McCormick happened to be right there, I said, "You have to talk to Ms. McCormick about that. I'm not gonna tell you who the kid was, but I'm just gonna point at his mother, that kid that was the kisser."
Gets it from his father.
But I, my hats off to the kin, to the elementary teachers. I would be deaf, you know, that was like louder than a rock concert in there. It was profound to me, but they were letting off that, that energy that they couldn't do in the regular course of the classroom. And, uh, I had a good time over there, and, um, I'll be back, but I don't know when I'll be back. Worked me harder than I worked in my regular job. And then I did eat popcorn at the end of it, when all the boxes were filled, all the reorders come back, but we didn't put in enough, or we messed up. Okay, okay, we messed up, you didn't, I'm looking at the number, it says twenty-three, it didn't say thirty-three. So we got all that figured out, all the boxes were gone, all the popcorn was gone, then it was time for me to enjoy some popcorn. And I had my bag, my bag that I took out with me as I walked out of the building. So I had a good day at Seminole.
And then all afternoon, he was picking those.
My floss.
Or you smelled like popcorn the whole day.
I couldn't, I don't, I, I don't know how they can work in that room, because it can never get rid of that popcorn smell. Never get rid of it. Um, also to the family of, uh, Dr. James Thompson, um, his two, uh, children were alumnus of Mount Clemens Community School District. Uh, his wife, uh, retired from the school district after many years of service. I had the opportunity of serving on the board, uh, for two years, uh, with Dr. Thompson back in eighty-five, when I first got on the board. I had met Jim when I was probably ten years old, when I, I was visiting North Broadway Church of, Church of God and Christ when I was with, with some friends of mine. And so we, we had almost a fifty-year, uh, relationship. Uh, there were times that I would go to him and counsel and for, for guidance and for advice on whether it was when I was president of NAACP, and we had an issue with a young, a young black man that got beat to death down on Gratchett in Roseville, and had to deal with, deal with all that. He was very instrumental in guiding me and counseling me on, on how to handle that, because the media was all over me, what you gonna do, all, so I, I, I was always, um, uh, speaking with Brother Thompson, um, and getting, uh, guidance from him. Um, he was just a kindred soul. Uh, he meant so much to this community, not only to his church family, but to the community of Mount Clemens as a whole. Uh, he had, he held, in my opinion, he held iconic status, uh, in this community. Uh, and he will truly not only be missed by his church family and the, and the parishioners of his church, but this, this entire community. So my condolences, uh, uh, to the family and the prayers, uh, with the family, uh, during this, this, uh, period of time. Also condolences out to the young lady, uh, that lost her, 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 her young child, uh, during, Christina showed me this picture of this beautiful baby when we were over there Friday, you know, with popcorn. She said, "Yeah, this, this kid just died." I mean, they don't know why, and he just re, I think it was the day before, or?
It happened earlier that weekend.
Earlier that day, yeah, okay.
No, that, yeah, the week.
Yeah, earlier in that weekend, I was just, wow, so, 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 so young, and so, you know, just boom, here today and gone today. So, so you never know. Um, so, and, 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 and every moment that we're here is precious, and we need to live life, uh, because we never know when there'll be no more life to live, and we don't control that. Um, every, my colleagues have talked about the importance of November the sixth. Well, I'm gonna say November the sixth is the day, but you don't have to wait to November the sixth to vote. You can cast an absentee ballot if you're gonna be out away from your voting community, or if you feel like, yeah, you know, you just don't wanna wait in lines for the, at the polls, or you got something important to do, get an absentee ballot. But by all means, please, uh, cast your ballot. And I'm not going to politicize it, but, uh, our, our, our citizens, our citizen during the citizen comment, you know, broke it down eloquently on the impact that the renewal millage has on this school system and this community, uh, and the importance of it. And then Mr. Lenninberry brought forward a, a bill that I was not aware of, uh, how that impacts this community, uh, if, if the votes don't go in a certain way. So it's important, um, that you cast a ballot. And remember to turn the ballot over at the very end, on the back of a very long ballot, are the issues for the school with the millage. Please don't forget to turn your ballot over and look at the bottom of the page and cast a vote, a vote, uh, uh, for the, the millage renewal. Excuse me. The homecoming was cold. It was cold, and it was kinda wet, if I recall. The bathers, they, they struggled valiantly, they fought valiantly, uh, but we did not come out as victors that day. But all of the homecoming, uh, kings and queens and duchess and duck, duchess and princes and princes and dukes and duchess and whatever, lords and lordess, whatever they'll call themselves, um, they were dressed appropriately. I mean, usually you see the, the, the homecoming queen with these fabulous gowns and all that, they wasn't playing that this year. They wouldn't go be out there and be cold. They, they dressed appropriately for the weather, but they had a good time. Um, even after the, even after the, the, the football game, the kids were still around, the students were around milling and enjoying each other. There was a rambunctious group of little kids. I don't know where they were, if they were middle school students, but they cared nothing about the football game. They were just there, running up and down, as I'm always, be careful in the stands, you know, liquid sunshine makes it slippery. Um, but these students had a bunch of energy, and I, you guys should be out there on the football field, all that energy, run up and down the stadium. But, um, a good time was held, had by all, and, uh, I was just glad to be a part of it. Uh, and I enjoy, um, doing the announcing, uh, for, for the bathers, and, um, those are my comments. Uh, the Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Moved by Mr. Monk.
Support?
Second by Ms. Walker. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing is seen none, call roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Bruley?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Meeting's adjourned at six fifty in the P. M. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.